You've got to come back in with whatever you're doing, right?
Yeah. I mean, if we're not here, I'll find out.
If you want to sit back there and look at that, just turn it backwards. That's the only copy we have, so that was years ago.
Yeah, that's not anything current. Okay, motion open meeting.
So, motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show the vote unanimous, show the meeting open, planning board meeting open at seven thirty-six.
Okay.
Just read the agenda in for the record. Let's see, tonight's agenda, on June 2nd, Planning Board Business, and minute approval. And we have Chesterton, we're going to read into a letter that was sent to us today. Skip Sheehan Way, Groveland Fairways Lots, Charlotte Parker, Gary Caruso, 194, 441 Main Street, which is asked for an extension, we'll get to that, and bond discussion group for Craft Truck Drive. Okay, so first up, Planning Board Business, Jim, we administer.
Okay, I want a motion to approve the minutes of five nineteen fifteen. Need a motion.
Some motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show the vote unanimous, minutes approved. Okay.
All right. One other thing before we get into anything else. I just want to add, do you want to advertise?
It's not okay. We're just paying eight times.
We have two Planning Board positions available. So if anybody's out there that's interested and wants to help their town, here's a chance. The Planning Board is looking for two new interested members. A full-time member and an associate member to serve when there is a vacancy, a conflict of interests, or an absence by a full-time member. The associate member could move up to a full-time member if a present member steps down. We have four present members with years of experience to help teach new members so they would have the necessary knowledge and tools to make good decisions for the town. The process can take up to two years. We work well together as a board, and you will find new members who are welcome to this board. So that's my advertisement for the night.
Here, here. Well said. Is that it for Planning Board Business, besides the mail we're going to? We have a report to pass down, it's an old one, Chesterton, May 8th. You've got it. Do you have the May?
That was for the May 8th, believe it was the May 8th.
Believe so. It's just a copy of what we already have. Yeah, this is, it's an older version.
Walter, Alan, Alan and the other one are going to be late anyway, so let's finish up Chesterton and Jim.
Okay. Can you jump up? If we're done with the local Planning Board Business, yeah, Chesterton's up for requesting an extension and did you guys get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay.
He wants to be put on the sixteenth, which is 441 Main.
Yeah, let me just read that into the for the record. Did they give you a hard copy of that?
Uh, yes, but no.
You get the email too? Okay. Let me just see if I can grab that out here. Okay, we have an email from Larry Ogden. I'm reading on Chesterton.
Yes, and the reason was that Eric Hopper is in Port.
That's 441.
Right.
Chesterton.
So.
Four forty-one Main Street is Chesterton's.
Was that on your agenda? Yeah, it was, okay. Well, yeah, I think what he's trying to do is just, just let everybody know that we see the letter to
Yeah, for the extension for Chesterton. So it's from PDA, which is their construction company, for Chesterton. And what they're requesting for is a favorable decision from the Planning Board on the May nineteen letter to go ahead with the building sites, the footings and foundations. So we need a motion to, to work on that in a moment. And they begin to work on the outstanding items with Christiansen and Sergi. And they're requesting an extension of the board for sixty days until July thirty-one to complete that process. So that would be motion two, to grant an extension of site plan review to July thirty-one.
When did you get that? I didn't get that.
This came in at today. It came in at
To August what?
July thirty-one.
Seven thirty-one, yeah, well, we haven't even made it up.
Three oh eight.
What? I don't, we're going to have to find out, you know, what dates we're going to use in July or August, because we're only going to meet once.
Right, this was a sixty-day extension just for the process. They hoped to have it done before that, but it was just because site plan's thirty days to extend it.
Sixty days?
Right.
Okay.
So we could get the review done. So, so let's get that one out of the way. So a motion to allow Chesterton with PDA, the sixty-day extension, to July thirty-one.
Okay.
Twenty fifteen, somebody want a motion and second?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, second, yes.
Okay, all in favor, so you all saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous, show the extension granted. And the other acting part for Chesterton was the, because we couldn't get him on the agenda last week, was to allow him to go ahead on the construction of the foundations and the buildings, those two that were inside the inset.
The inside one, yes.
Yeah.
And we didn't, we couldn't act on it because they weren't on the agenda. Alan sent in okay, but we couldn't act on it. So the second, that would be the motion to go ahead and approve that so they could put the foundations in while the site plan's considering.
Right, I thought we already approved that.
I thought we did, I don't know.
Well, we couldn't act on it, remember? Because we weren't on the agenda, we couldn't make the official vote.
All right.
We told them to go ahead, but we didn't.
No motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show the vote unanimous. And that was on the May nineteen letter from Cayman Engineering that sparked that review. Okay, Neil, is that, okay, so you're all set, so we can jump over to Skip Sheehan Way.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, let me send this to you in one second. Anybody else?
I wanted to wait for Alan to give you.
Yeah, yeah, we have to.
For Chesterton's and this one. And this one too.
I don't think Alan was coming.
Yes, I just said beforehand, he was going to be late, he's going to give here by eight o'clock, you weren't listening.
So you want to move up to Groveland Fairways?
Okay. Groveland Fairways.
What's this now? What do you want me to?
You sitting in, or?
Well, I can go in the other room with Michelle.
Yeah.
We'll go look at the plan.
How you guys doing, Nick?
Good.
Good. All right, so I am here today because the last time I was here and spoke to the Planning Board.
Okay, your name?
My name's Eric Held, resident of Groveland, Massachusetts, Sixth Fairway Drive.
Actually, Walter.
Yeah.
You need to wait for the representative. George Hasleton is supposed to be sending a representative here because he couldn't make the meeting.
What time?
He was on the schedule for after eight, because when the schedule was set up and he was notified, he knew that we were having a quarter of eight hearing that could go to eight, eight fifteen.
Do we have confirmation of that today?
No, not today.
I, I can, I can wait.
Okay.
I think we should, in all fairness.
Yeah.
If you don't be talking about someone, you need.
That's absolutely fine, but I guess if the representative doesn't show, I would, I would still like to speak to the board.
Yeah.
True, true.
Okay, so then we can go to 441 Main Street, which is, act on that. They requested an extension, did everybody get that?
I thought we already voted on that.
No, that was for Chesterton.
He's got me all confused.
You were talking 441, and it's like, then you went to Chesterton. So the motion is to extend on 441 to six sixteen, right?
That's a different motion, we didn't act, we didn't vote on that one yet. We didn't even make that motion yet. We made a motion to extend Chesterton's site plan review to July thirty-one.
Yes, I know that, but you were talking about, you know, 441 prior to that.
Yeah, I did, I ran through the whole agenda, you're correct. Okay, so for 441 Main Street.
Yes.
Okay, that's the one where they have requested an extension from Larry Ogden.
To six sixteen?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Extension granted for 441 Main Street to June sixteen, twenty fifteen. All right. So who else is here that we can handle?
No one.
Okay. Do you want to pause the, is that a live broadcast?
No.
Oh, it, oh, we're live tonight, okay, never mind. Just going through the Planning Board mail from other departments while we're waiting for representatives from Groveland Fairways.
With, with the cancellation, we're going to be on pause for at least another fifteen minutes, so.
You didn't tell me turn is on.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
So I think we ought to just go off the air for now, and then when the rest of the people come in, as they were scheduled.
Yeah.
They didn't know that the, was cancellation.
Yeah, once you, once you put it on pause, Charlie, guess what? It didn't go on. All set?
Yeah.
Hey. This is Groveland Fairways, Lot six, Eric Held, and
Okay, sorry. So the reason I'm here is because last time I was here and spoke to the Planning Board, it was in regards to a drainage issue of water runoff that I have on a hill on the adjacent side of my property, Sixth Groveland, Sixth Fairway Drive, Groveland, Massachusetts. And it's come to my attention, well, so let me backtrack. At the conclusion of that last meeting, the Planning Board instructed George Hassleton of Greenscape Building to install the French drain, and he indicated that that is what he would do. And it's recently come to my attention that at the last Planning Board meeting, Mr. Hassleton blatantly lied to the board and said that we had a conversation where I had recently planted, refinished and planted my yard, and that I did not want the yard torn up at that point in time, and that I was willing to, I don't know, wait and see how things turned out. And I'm here to make a statement that that was blatantly incorrect, and that was a straight-out lie on George's part to the, the Planning Board.
How's the last couple of days been with all the rain?
So, was able to snap a couple of pictures. I think I have two of them. One was, let's see. This picture was early last week when we had approximately a quarter inch rain.
Yeah.
So that's not including any of the runoff that hasn't occurred just over the last two days. And when you can see where the water's coming straight off the hill, and it's, it's washing every, everything up.
That's the same area where the French drain is going to go?
Exact, exact same area.
Okay, and then anything the last, like yesterday?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's kind of, it's really kind of hard to tell. So this was, this was today, that, that area. So this is a little bit more closer to the street, whereas that line that you saw earlier is, is kind of right, running up right, right there is. This is kind of hard to see because of the rain.
No, it's still, still running. I'll show the rest of the board then. Same spot, same.
Since this was earlier, earlier this afternoon. Now, I, I spoke to my real estate agent, and, you know, on, on the site plan, you know, it, it calls for, the site plan calls for a retaining wall in, in that area. And I, I'm under the impression that the building company is doing everything that they can to dodge, to having to foot the bill to install a retaining wall. So there's the approved site plan that the, the city approved. And it clearly shows the detail of a retaining wall on, on the site plan. And I, I also have a small email trail dating back to almost a year ago, come April, this last April.
Do you have a full set of plans, George, do you have a full set with you?
I don't. And just for the record, when I met with Bob on the site, probably last week or the week after, I was under, I was under the impression that you were satisfied because you got grass to grow in, and you did want to wait.
I did get a lot of grass to grow in, because I put three hundred pounds of seed down over on top of what your landscape had put down, and I had twenty-two yards of topsoil pulled in.
Let me finish here, okay. So I was
Oh, so you speculated off a conversation you had with, with, with Bob Ackerman.
Hold on, hold on, wait a second.
Just, let's just address the board so we get that in. I'm under the impression the French drain has got to go in, ain't it?
I have, I have no problem putting the French drain. You know, when we were on site, we determined that everything looked good and that you were happy. That's what I heard, and if I assumed incorrectly, I apologize. And I have no problem putting the French drain in. I do have a letter and pictures that Josh is bringing shortly from Eric Botterman, the owner of Millennium Engineering, who came by and took pictures of his lot and did a slope analysis, and said, number one, that the retaining wall is not required by the plan, and number two, it's not needed because the slope doesn't meet the three to one anymore because we brought in over a thousand yards of fill.
Did you get a waiver on the plan?
Excuse me?
Was there a waiver?
Eric said that that wasn't a requirement on the plan, it was just a preferential thing.
Well, if it was on the plan, the plan is the record, and if you deviate from the plan, you got to put a request in for a waiver.
He told me because it was on the lot specifically that it wasn't, it was just more of a
It's all part of the subdivision plan, and once it goes into A and R status, you're, you're correct. But once it's all part of the plan, subdivision is all part of it, so.
Now, I, you know, I'm under the, I'm under the assumption that this is something that the building company knew that they were supposed to install from the get-go because it was on the plan, and that the cost for this was, was backed into the price of my house. So essentially, he charged me for a retaining wall, and he's, he's, he's sitting here trying to justify why he doesn't need to install the retaining wall.
No, you're absolutely incorrect, we brought in a thousand yards of fill, and I
You did not bring in a thousand yards of fill.
Yeah, it is, but it's so small, Bob. It's tough to pick up on that.
Show you a bill for it.
Well, hold on, the, how he does his pricing is his, is his business on that.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's something that's on the plan, it's required, okay, it's required to go in. Now, if it's no longer necessary, that has to be modified, that's called a modification of the plan, it's under an A to one W. So that has, that's a whole hearing process in by itself, and if the board considers it a minor change or major change. But it still has to be submitted if there's something on the plan, so it runs with the land. Now, if it was an A and R plan, George, and you're doing work on the, on the site, then that's a different story. Okay, but what was the original slope?
This looks like
On that, do you recall?
Yeah, and then it goes here.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that. So we got a couple of issues. Now, the retaining wall, was that going to be directly on top of where this French drain was going to be going?
Uh, it, honestly, it would have been, I mean, the, the hill, it kind of, you know, it slopes down like this, and the retaining, the, the water pooling is, is right here, and the, the, the main issue is like this, this, these last three feet of the hill where all that water percolates down, because the water table in the area is so high, there's this, there's nowhere for that, that water to go, but it comes out the bottom of the hill and straight down. And, you know, if the retaining wall was engineered correctly, it would, that, that, that land would be dug away, it would be backfilled, the retaining wall would have a toe drain straight down to the, to the street. It accomplishes the same thing that, 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 that the retaining wall accomplishes. And, and furthermore, the, the hill is, it's, it's a, it's a bear to mow. I mean, I, I can't do it with my riding lawnmower, and even doing like the, the higher slopes with my pushing. I, I actually haven't measured it, I, I just happen to have the, the bandwidth to.
What's your pitch angle on the, on the tractor?
I'm sorry?
Your pitch angle when you're cutting it on the hill, is it, are you thirty degrees, sixty degrees?
Uh, I mean, it's, it's at least, it's at least thirty and, and more in some of the spots.
Okay, and how far up does it go?
Uh, I mean, it really depends on how, how far back on, I guess, how far back on the property line you're, you're talking about. I mean, it is, it is a lot more gradual. Uh, I mean, the, the area that, that I, I can't mow with, with the riding lawnmower, and it's, which is even a challenge with the push mower, is probably maybe fifteen to twenty feet in length.
So, okay, so is, and that was the length of the wall, is anybody?
Uh, I mean, it's, that, that, that site plan's a scale, I think, I measured it out to be like thirty, or like anywhere between twenty-five and thirty, I, I don't know, it was, to be honest, it was, it was a while ago.
Okay, and nobody's got a, does, is Millennium come with a full set of plans?
No, they're not.
Okay.
No, what I'd recommend is if we want to go out and do a site visit with Millennium, you know, that would be fine.
Well, I don't know if we need Millennium to do a site walk, what we do need is a site walk with the Planning Board, obviously.
Sure, but I certainly want some representation there for that site walk.
If, if I may, I also have, you know, I, I spoke to a small email trail. This, now, this is something we brought up back in April, even before April fourteen. This is just one of the first emails I, I found, and if you read, if you, if you skim through that, it makes reference to retaining wall, it makes reference that they acknowledge that the planning walls
Is it the backwards L here?
Uh, no, it's actually the, the front, the front of it.
It's just that part?
Yeah.
The, you're not talking this part?
No, but I mean, the, the water, the water issue does, I'm just going to the back of the yard.
This site plan does show the wall like a backwards L.
Let me see if I can find a set of plans, so we can take a, a better look at that.
Now, that picture that you showed us, where was that dry spot?
Uh, the dry spot was
Bear, bear spot, rather.
Uh, was, was right up by the, the sidewalk where, where the, one of the, the trees there had been, had been planted.
In the back of the yard?
Uh, in the, in the front of the yard.
In the front?
Yeah, in the front, yeah.
Wow.
That's where all the water
Yeah, because I went down today, and I was glad to see the grass growing.
Yeah, I would like to take a walk down tomorrow, just to, just to verify all this. Because I just drove by and it looked pretty good to me about three seconds ago, so.
I mean, look If you've got a high water table, I mean, you're going to get water no matter what.
Right, exactly.
It's almost like, you know, it's, it's like a French drain might be better at that
Listen, I have no problem putting the French drain in, but I can, you can see after tomorrow, even after all the rain, I just drove by, it looks like it's in great shape. I didn't see any washout whatsoever, the only washout that was there was because grass just hadn't grown yet. But I, I'm certain when you go by tomorrow, or tonight, if you want to, that you'll see that it looks like it's in good shape, you know? So I think Eric's taking it a little bit overboard right now, but, and I have a letter coming from Millennium, from Eric Botterman, you know, but I definitely, if, if we're insistent on doing something, I've, like I said, I have no problem putting in the French drain, but I want a site walk with my representation with an engineer, and maybe Peter, the third-party engineer, to, to talk about how ludicrous this is.
But the, but the point is, is we, I, I mean, I'd rather wait until the, the other gentleman comes back, but we're, we're getting back to the same spot we were over, over a month ago now, and he's, he's, he's continuing to dodge, dodge his requirement.
Get a better look at this.
Yeah, I mean, all, all I had was a eight-and-a-half by eleven scan, so.
That's all right. Now, this plan here, just so everybody's on board with this, this dated January fifteen, twenty thirteen.
Uh, that is the correct, that should be the correct plan.
You're in Lot six?
Uh, Lot six, correct. Just verify that's the correct date, Molly.
Yeah, June fifteen, twenty thirteen.
Yeah, I'm going to look right now.
Okay. It'll be close. Okay, so Lot six, come on over here, oh, yeah. Yeah, that's pretty visible retaining wall. And you can see why it's there.
Right, and so we brought up the fill.
Yeah. I see it, okay.
We brought up, we brought up this lot here.
Right.
This came in, we brought up about a thousand yards over here.
Sixty-two, sixty, hang on, just checking sloping here, so we get sixty to sixty, so we get an eight-foot, eight-foot drop anyway, and that's on that.
Which is not anymore, though.
Okay, but we still got a slope, would they, does these contours tighten up?
That's, yeah, well, I have the letter coming from Eric.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they didn't, they didn't bring in a lot of fill. You can see in the back end here, if you go out, you can see where they took the, the front loader and cut away at the hill because the marks are still there where the, the hay bales were, were marked, they cut.
Yeah, so you're showing a finish, a finish grade here of sixty-two. Let's see, sixty-two, where's that? Here. Of sixty-six, so with the wall up, it was only a four-foot grade by forty feet, or thereabouts. So it's a very slight slope.
Yeah, I think that's the four, four feet is the, the
This grade's a lot higher.
Four feet and forty.
This grade's a lot higher, though, you know.
Up in here, so, so this changed?
Yes, it is.
All right, so you went from, so sixty is now what? And I, I was only going from the side.
I don't know exactly, but I know it's higher than what it, what it shows in the existing plan.
Okay, so, but this here, you know, jumping, jumping up is what was holding this to a finish grade of just
Well, like I said, I was just, I just drove by there, Molly.
Yeah.
And you guys can look at it tomorrow, you can see that there hasn't been any washout. The only washout, if any movement at all, was because there was nothing
Has it puddled?
I mean, it's
There's no puddles there now.
It's a steady, steady stream when it was raining.
That's, 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 yeah. Now, on your notes page, let's see.
Right, but surface water, we want it to run to the street. And when you get a blanket of grass that really thickens up, yours is brand-new, and we had a heavy storm the other day and, and the other night. But if you had a thicker blanket of grass, it would have dissipated even quicker out to the road and into the catch spaces where we want it to go. So I think what we said was at the last meeting when nobody was happy with the French drain and stuff, was I suggested let the grass grow and see how it does.
But, but Bob, the reason I, I brought this up a year ago, well over a year ago, is because before we even signed the PMS, we, we walked the, we walked the property and we, we knew it was a little wet, and we knew that hill held a significant amount of water, and that was with the, the virgin grass that had been growing there for however long Bob, Bob has, has had the driving range there.
Do you have that letter? Hey. So you're, I forget your first name.
This is Josh.
All right. Josh, oh, wait. Okay, now, this is
There's the letter.
This is the retaining wall, is that the only one on the property? On the whole subdivision, is that the only one?
There's actually one on the back, I think drawn on the back, Lot, Lot, Lot four.
I think there's an existing one showing on Lot four.
Okay, so existing, so this is the only new one?
Well, no, because Lots seven and eight are supposed to have retaining walls just by virtue of replacing the height of that hill. Lot seven is actually down here, but they don't, and Lot eight is on top of the hill.
Okay, so there's yours, okay, there's seven. And Lot eight?
Yeah, I mean, this, this house was actually flipped a hundred and eighty degrees and
Well, this house is actually right close to the street, so that's not even an accurate depiction of that house.
So they moved?
Yes.
Lot eight?
Lot seven, Lot seven, the house in Lot seven.
How, how close to the street?
Um, I think it's almost, what, probably ten feet off the setback?
Meaning?
It's at least thirty feet from the Uh, it's at least thirty feet from the, thirty, forty feet from the street, like from the sidewalk.
Did you, is it fully contained within the CBA?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, we have-
Because the, the CBA's over here.
Yeah, well, that one's pushed back, lot eight's pushed back, lot seven is the one that's closer, right?
So that one's, that one's good?
Yep.
Okay. So seven's close to the street, eight's there.
Lot eight's farther back.
So retaining walls we know of, lot seven and six. And what else?
Lot eight, there's gonna be a retaining wall just because of the mirror, because of the lot eight.
That was based, the retaining wall on seven eight is-
That was the proposed driveway profile for lot seven. You know, customers changed their house a little bit, so.
So instead of going from here, was it go straight out?
Yeah.
Okay. So where's the retaining wall that was planned on eight?
There was nothing planned on eight.
There just, there is one there.
Because of the driveway profile.
Yeah, so they had a, they asked for a walkout basement, so based on that, it required a retaining wall.
Okay. So, so eight's gonna get one because of, because of what happened on the lot. Thank you.
Read those.
Okay. And then the, uh, seven and six are gonna be the other ones. Uh, okay, one moment, while we're back. Don't you guys, Bob, take a look at this for a second. Just so you're on board, we can actually see it. Let's move up. When were these pictures taken?
A couple days ago.
Before the rain.
Yeah, but I'm sure when you go out there tomorrow and look at it, you'll see that it actually looks even better because there's been more, uh, grass generation and there's absolutely no washout. And I'll make sure I take pictures when I leave here, just to make sure that everyone knows what's there existing after the hard rain. I just drove by it.
Okay. Now, what's, that retaining wall, I didn't check the length on it. What's that cost to install?
I don't know.
Brooke, yes?
A few thousand bucks anyways.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a fieldstone retaining wall, so I would imagine close to fifteen.
Now, here's a couple of options. Okay. We got a French drain we gotta put in for twenty-five-year, hundred-year storming. And I'm pretty set on the French drain. There's no way you're gonna get rid of that. This is just a, a little bit of a storm, I think that's a little bit of puddling or streaming. So, and that's an easy fix, okay? The retaining wall, a couple thousand bucks to put in based upon your estimates. Now, we can take your engineering review, submit it to our engineering review, and you're gonna pay for the review and come to a different conclusion or the same conclusion, your choice, okay? Um, and then you're gonna modify the plan. So, which is a whole nother process to go through. So, um, there's a couple of ways you can handle this, okay? If you want to submit them this, and what, we can accept this as the board in for engineering review, you can post probably more than two thousand dollars to get the review done and see what the outcome is, okay? And then you still gotta modify the plan, because if the retaining wall comes off since it was submitted, um, you can do the modification and that could probably be done at the same time, okay? But that does take a little bit of time and you're gonna delay things into the summer. So I'll leave you with that to come up with some kind of a conclusion. The French drain speaks for itself. There's, there's really no other way to stop that from going. Even if you had thick lawn in there, it's not gonna stop a twenty-five-year storm from erosion.
Walter, this retaining wall, it's one inch and forty, this is approximately a hundred and twenty feet.
Is it? It's long.
Total, that's the side and the L on it.
Now, look at the breakdown, Bob, on, on sheet, uh, next to the last sheet.
Yeah.
And it's, it's designed well. It, it's got a very good design on the retaining wall for what its purpose was for.
I will note too that the detail says that anything over four feet requires, uh, a special engineer to plan to the town or as well.
I didn't check the height on that, but it's, it does have six inches of room on the back, but it's a well-constructed wall. It's nice, took some time designing.
Can I ask you a question? Why, why does the plan need revised for the wall if the wall comes off? We've, we've taken the house, the houses and the houses have moved around. They don't all sit exactly on the plan as drawn, right? There was liberties taken during building and we didn't have to revise plans for that.
Because we didn't know about it. You gotta submit an ASBIL if it's got a showwall, those changes.
They have been submitted.
Okay, I haven't seen. Where's your ASBIL? You got an ASBIL plan on the lot?
We submitted all our ASBILs because it does-
If you have a modification on a plan, the, the board will vote whether it's a minor or major change, okay? To see if you have to go through the full-blown hearing process, but if you've moved everything around like that on the lot, particularly if it's outside the setbacks on the CBA.
Nothing's been moved outside the setbacks.
But no, I mean the setbacks of the CBA, the circle.
Yeah.
If that house is, that, the CBA circle was, is designed specifically so you can go anywhere in that circle and move anything around you want. But if you moved it so that a corner of it is outside that circle, we don't know. Because we assume that on that CBA circle, the house is inside it. If it moved out, you've got to submit a plan showing that. And if you didn't, then we'll wait for that plan. But we didn't know about any changes.
All the houses will be in that circle, but doesn't, doesn't mean they're exactly where they are within that circle. They can move to the right, to the left, to the back.
Anywhere in that circle is fine.
Yeah.
And the circle includes the setbacks. That's, that's fine. And obviously you can't, you know, you gotta move six feet here or six feet there. That's very reasonable.
But we also, based on the house design, bring in fill or delete fill based on giving the customer what they've chosen. To give them, you know, if someone wants a walkout and it's close, you know, we take out fill, you know? But we have to put a retaining wall in or, or not, you know?
Right. Now, here's the other part of the CBA. Um, a few times we've had issues with customers. They get lots and, and yours are fairly flat. Okay, and they'll go to put a swimming pool in. The swimming pool or the shed or anything else is all designed to go within that CBA. So there's no wetlands, there's no setbacks, there's not, the customer, when you're done, the homeowner can say, I want to put a swimming pool. And it goes right inside that circle and emits, meets every single zoning and setback requirement. That's why that's all designed. It may seem like it's just a house, but it's not. It's for afterlife, too.
I, I can tell you that, uh, my house and lot four are outside of the circle, just from looking at this.
Well, that's gonna be, that's a minor adjustment. That's fine on that, but that has to be done. If you, this is the first time you've run across that, then you'll have to do that, yeah.
I, I doubt that the engineers would place the house outside of it, but I'll confirm it with-
Well, it's, it's in, take issue. You get the bounce, you have, you don't have bounce in yet, no?
No, they don't. They, they don't actually.
Not yet.
Yeah, that's, it's usually lax. But if you have a stake, you can, you know, front a tape as well. You don't see, see what you're gonna do. But the, um, if you're pulling off a retaining wall, which is a structure, which is designed for erosion control and sediment control, and in this case drainage as well, by the looks of that design, then that's a change. And that has to be noted and brought in. So you've got some, some time to figure this out on what you're gonna do with this.
Okay, I will say that our, our one-year warranty on the home expires July, mid-July. Um, so, uh, given the history with, with, with these gentlemen, I, I would like this resolved prior to that one-year warranty expiring.
Well, we're gonna jump on this thing here. What we're given, um, the George opportunity to do here, you, you're submitting an engineering review letter.
I'm gonna continue this until the next meeting when I can bring my engineers and my lawyer, without a doubt. I'm not gonna act on anything because I've been going off of, you know, what Bob and I discussed and I'm trying to do the right thing. I told, if you really want the, the French drain in, I said I would, I would put it in. I told Bob that I would put it in, but we all seemed to think at the time, and I was the understanding that you were happy with what was happening, so.
I, I mentioned a French drain.
Yeah.
I expect a French drain in there, okay? He's in the home right now. Ten years from now, I don't know who's gonna be there, okay? But that French drain needs to go in the ground. Now, why it's not, I don't know, but it's going in, okay? So you can do it now, okay, or you can do it after the next meeting, but that'll take care of the problems. The wall is something that just surfaced up now. You've submitted a review. This board can vote whether to send this off to our review. You can post the check, five thousand dollars for engineering review tomorrow, okay? We'll send this right out.
I would not like to do that.
Okay.
I don't know, I wanna submit that, then.
Okay. So then the easy thing is to get out on site, get the board out there, let's take a look at this. Maybe your wall doesn't have to be a hundred and twenty feet long. We don't know. I haven't personally walked this site except once, um, since this issue arose.
Walter, at, at the last meeting, I was under the impression that when we were mentioning French drains and stuff, you weren't that keen on it at that meeting. I'll look at the tape and see. But, uh, I wanna hear from you tonight, exactly what do you want? Do you want the wall put in specifically, or do you want the French drain put in, or do you want both? What, what?
I mean, honestly, I, I, I want him to do what, you know, the, I, I'm under the impression that the wall was a condition of the approval. And I think that, uh, he should, he should, he should hold to his commitment to, uh, doing wha- wha- whatever, uh, whatever conditions were, were, were grant, were made and, and, and the board granting him approval to, to, to build the development. Because you, you need to hold his feet to the fire because if he's gonna continue to build houses here in Groveland, you know, i- if, if you don't hold his feet to the fire on this, what, what's he gonna do with the next development? And then what's he gonna do with the next development? If they can give him an inch, he's gonna take a mile.
The, the board will, will, will work within the regulation for that, okay? Um, but we're asking you a direct question here.
Walter, I wanna hear from him exactly what you want.
I want a wall with a tow drain because I can't mow the wall, can't mow that hill.
I don't wanna know why, you know, I just wanna know what you want. You want the wall.
The wall with the tow drain because it accomplishes, in my opinion, it accomplishes the same thing. Uh, it can at least put some mulch up there and plant some plants and never have to worry about mowing that.
Okay. And what about the French drain, which continues, looks like further extending from the wall area? I mean, under the wall will be the, as you mentioned, the tow drain, so that'll take care of part of it. How far further does that come out?
Uh, I mean, i- if you have to tear the whole yard up, front yard up on that side, I, I don't care. I think it, it's, whatever, whatever needs to be done should, should be done, so I don't have to worry about this two years after being into the house.
Well, trenching a French drain up to the wall point is simple. Um, embedding, that detail has a drain under it. So that'll be continued in the walls up on it and then the grading that backs up against it, et cetera. So, so that'll follow. It's, it's very detailed on how that's supposed to be. So if I'm hearing this right and the board hears this right, French drain, tow drain under the wall, okay, and everything done to make sure that's back the way it was designed?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I would like.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I'm gonna decide when I go out and look again. I was there today, too.
Okay.
But, uh, I was also there when, before his house was even built. And when we put the roadway in, if the fire, I think I brought pictures and showing the fire items. And I think you personally asked, why are they sticking up above the ground so high?
Yeah.
It's because they filled in the land and changed the contours and everything. They put a lot of fill in there. And that changed everything.
Well, that's completely understandable when that happens. You just gotta do follow-through and watch it. I mean, you can't put it down and forget about it. It's gonna settle. Uh, it got dry for a long time. Now we got all this rain. I mean, it's gonna be a process until it actually takes root and hold. And then, as I mentioned the example last week on Matthew Drive, we had four years later, had to go back in and redo a riprap drain.
Right.
And Mr. Kelly did it on his own. He didn't even like the way it came out.
The only jurisdiction I had was the roadway. And that was my job to make sure that was constructed, everything to do with the road and the subdrains and the, uh, water and sewer and all that.
Yeah, the RPC, okay.
Landscaping, all we have jurisdiction is to make sure there was six inches of room put down.
Mm-hmm. And we got the detail on the wall to, to play with here. So, so let's do a sidewalk, um, to get out there individually. Are you?
I would like to be there, so whenever the, the board would like to-
When are you available?
Uh, I mean, my schedule is pretty, pretty open with, with work, so as long as I have a couple of days' notice.
Get a schedule here.
Any, anytime's good for me, yeah.
Do it tomorrow.
Sadly, I'll be busy in front. No, actually, got a big cookout with fifty people, Tom. I'll be busy Thursday, Friday.
Early, earlier in the morning, um, if possible, definitely works best for me.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that?
We're gonna go tomorrow. Me and Bob will come out there tomorrow morning. We can't have three at one point or it's a-
Oh, yeah, it's a meeting. Yeah, sorry. So are you home during the day later tomorrow?
Uh, well, it depends on what time in the, in the morning, um, what that-
They're gonna go first?
I'm up at the ass crack of dawn, so it's-
Yeah, uh, ten.
Okay, ten a.m.
Okay, I can be there at ten.
Okay, when they leave, I'll come in. We'll go take a look at that.
Um, okay, so.
George, you gonna be out there, too?
Yes, I will.
Okay, can you, you got a two-hundred-foot tape, I'm sure?
Yeah.
Can you stake roughly, don't get the engineering surveyors out, okay? Where that wall is supposed to go so we can take a look as where it, where it falls roughly? Just the angle of the three stakes, one, two, three?
I can do my best to do that.
Fine. Your best is, is great. Just so we have a, a rough idea as to where this thing was supposed to go and see what the change is. Because you may have a, you may have, be doing two things at the same time, so, so we'll actually get the plan modified if, if something else moved at the same time.
So I, I also have another issue that I, in my opinion, is a lot more serious in nature than, um, this retaining wall, which is, in my opinion, bitching and arguing over pennies and nickels. Uh, but I had a, made some, uh, observations on the structure of the house and had a structure engineer.
All right, here's, hold on a second. Okay, house, okay, that is outside of our jurisdiction. Onto that. However, it is not outside the building inspector's jurisdiction. Um, so he can weigh on this heavy. Okay, have you spoken with him about this?
I have not.
Okay. So if he's, he's the person that you need to call in for that, because he has total control over the structure itself. Locations, um, roadways, walls, et cetera. Okay, we can handle that. But this should be addressed with the building inspector and he's pretty stupid on this stuff, so.
I do encourage you guys to, to read through that report, um, at least. Um, and if you do have any jurisdiction, um, in issuing a cease and desist on all current and future construction activities of greenscape in Groveland, I, I would strongly recommend-
I'd like to-
Oh, excuse me, I'm talking here!
Furthermore, I've had my own structural engineer walk through the house and he gave a full report saying the house is over.
Yeah, this, this paragraph is a response that I got from-
I'm just gonna offer on the record, because Eric seems to be dissatisfied with everything we do. So just on the record, I'd like to offer you to buy your house back and we'll take it back from you and you can move out and go find somewhere that you'll be happy to live.
Oh, really? I wonder why you would like to do that.
We'll pay you exactly what you paid for it.
Okay.
On the record.
Um, okay, so this, this issue, thank you, the board will accept this in. Okay, the board will accept this all. And remember, it's all public record. Everything is submitted to the board, okay? Um, please make an appointment with the building inspector, Mr. Skeena.
I will.
And speak with him, get him out there and, uh, get his assessment. He is in total control of the building itself.
Okay.
Okay, so he can go with that. All right, we have our schedules for tomorrow to do-
About ten o'clock.
Ten a.m.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, George, one, one other thing.
Sure.
On a different subject, I was, on number three, when I was down there today, did you notice the lake on that front yard of number three?
He's been watering that twenty-four-seven. He did that before it even started raining.
Yeah, well.
Is that the, the tree?
Right off the corner of, as you're looking at the house on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
There's a huge, it should have been graded a little more to get it away from the foundation.
Bob, can you bring that set of plans?
We need, yeah, the, uh, ASBILs. You should get ASBILs.
Yeah, I have the ASBILs.
Okay.
Did you happen to say?
Does that goes out? Do they have contours on them?
Uh, they should have some contours on them. I don't have them with me, so I don't know exactly.
Okay, you're still in the building process, so you're not like really behind on some of this.
No, I mean, when we, the, Millennium's gonna get out and do a full ASBIL to the entire site and they were gonna grab all the topo at that point.
That makes sense.
On the entire plan and overlay the exist, the ASBILs for the foundations. Because it's really hard when you do an ASBIL foundation, obviously you're not backfilled, it's hard to give exact topo and all that, so.
Right, no, that makes sense. You're not, we don't accept those yet. Those are next. We're gonna have a full set with location of everything from utilities. Because, you know, from plan to ASBIL, things move and slide, you understand?
They have all that data that they'll put on the plan when we submit the ASBIL.
But they do come here, too, so.
Oh, yeah. No, they, they do.
So, all right. Well, that answers that question.
I'll take a look at that tomorrow with you, Bob.
Yeah, just take a look at it. And if he, if he's right, they've been watering too much, but we had torrential rain. And there's a huge area that is gonna saturate down and if any problems arise from going into the- Did you do a subdrain around the house when you built it?
I did. Yeah, well, they have interiors with sump buckets and everything and it's water-
And out back, where the detention ponds out back, the sloping that, uh, Mr. Arcalian did around that, and then when you brought- And then when you brought the grade out, it's a V like where the two properties meet.
Okay.
It's supposed to keep flowing.
I'll take a look at it tomorrow morning.
I know Bob stills work on the retention fund that's scheduled like mid-month. He's gonna get started on that.
Okay.
Can you guys make me pull their construction trailer off the?
Thank you.
With the property.
Yeah, thank you.
Yours or?
No, it's, it's theirs.
No, I mean, whose property is it on?
I think by the 30th.
Depends on where, where it is.
It's, uh, it's in the common area, the lot 8A, if you look on the drawings.
Okay, so we'll take a look tomorrow.
Right, so I think they've actually turned the funds over for landscaping of that area to the treasurer of the neighborhood. Can't do anything out with that area with the trailer on there.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at it tomorrow. Thank you.
I don't know what happened to Alan and the other guy.
Okay, so what are you in for anyway?
My vote.
Let me go get a job.
Okay.
By the way, here's a letter too. You wanted a letter from, uh, Mr.?
Yes, from, uh, what, what was that guy, Tony?
Tony George.
Yeah, now, I talked to Tony and he said, he called me because he was very confused as to why he was signing a letter. Um, on to that, but we, um, have you figured out the fence and the wall next to his property yet? Do you have a?
I, he even walked it through with him and it's, the plan's, when the plan's filed, it gets filed with the registry of deeds and everything, with all that as a description.
Okay, so we get a wall, how, how big the wall, and the fence is going on the street side?
Correct, correct.
Okay, do we have that, do you have anything with you on the detail for that?
No, that, that's what.
Oh, that's what he was bringing?
Yeah.
Oh.
All right, while you're up here.
Okay. We are here.
What's that?
You're here.
Yeah.
All right, this is, this is yours, Skip Sheenway.
Yeah.
It was 21, 651, 72. And we just got the $8,000 check. So that leaves a balance of $13,651.
Yep.
Dollars and 72 cents. Now, when Jim and Bob get back, we'll talk about it, but I can make a copy of this and email it to you.
Mm-hmm.
You should have this already, but.
This is an easement. He has no idea what he's saying.
What's that?
He, he called me. He thinks it was just an okay for the, for the slope, not an easement for the slope.
No, he has a copy of the easement plan too.
He doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't understand. I'll, I'll tell him. He, he didn't.
Plus, we went through it and walked.
He, he did say he went through it, but he was very.
Tony's a realtor.
Right, and it will be recorded and it'll forever be on his property.
He didn't understand.
Not only did I give him a, a copy of the legal description.
Right.
Because even in the legal description, that's, I said, I told my lawyer, put a fence for him.
Right.
Okay, and a wall.
Yeah.
Okay, and we have a picture, not a picture, a, a drawing of it, okay, for him. And I walked through with Tony.
Yeah, he, he said he walked through it, but he didn't understand the, he's a senior, just didn't understand the, uh, what, what it was. He, he knew he signed something, but he didn't know what it was.
Yeah, that, I told him, we still have the easement thing, but that doesn't get, that, that doesn't get dealt till after it's voted and everything.
Right, okay.
I said, you guys requested a letter, so I had a letter done up. I said, I turned him a letter on it, and we walked through it. I'm gonna make sure Tony's taken care of. I like him a lot.
Well, maybe we should meet together?
That'd be a good idea.
Down on, down on there?
I have zero problem with that.
So, okay, so now I understand what he was talking about.
He's a good guy.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Skip Sheenway.
Okay, so we're missing the engineers and the engineer's final review and the?
Well, the review's done.
I, I can elaborate. I had a conference call with Woody Cammett and Alan Roscoe and myself. And I know what their feelings are and the main thing is, Scott Green was talking about paying a portion of the bill, which he did, 8,000.
Uh-huh.
Where'd he get that check? Leaves a balance of $13,651.72 outstanding.
Yeah.
Mr. Cammett says that he wants that paid. And he's not willing to do anything in escrow or anything like that. And he's not gonna do any more work on the project unless he gets paid. And he wants the board to mandate that the bill be paid because he works for us. And if the bill isn't paid, he wants a lien put on the property.
Okay, so what's the?
That's what he said.
Yeah, well, that's, that's pretty standard practice to have all the engineering bills paid upfront before decisions are issued.
I have some questions for you guys.
Okay.
When would they sign up for the contract? When was, when was Cammett hired?
When the project was filed.
When the project was filed, right, okay, which was in November.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I went back to look at some of their bills and asked them. They billed in July, August, September, okay? They pulled almost five, $5,000 out of an account, okay? And the project wasn't even filed yet.
When was the, when was the initial site?
Your, your initial trip in here was on May 20th.
Yeah.
No, no, the official filing.
Well, wait a minute, you had, you had a preliminary before that?
You had a preliminary.
I came in here, but Cammett wasn't hired then. Cammett, go look at when they signed their contract. They weren't hired till November because Alan didn't start till November.
But there was two different, you had a definitive filing?
No, I went right to definitive.
We didn't have the?
We didn't have no preliminary, zero preliminary, no preliminary.
But we had something before that too, because you were changing things.
You had the old plan. I came in myself and said, here's the old plan, I'm going to th- three lots. I want to go to three lots.
Okay.
And then you said, well, why would you change that out?
And, and check that out then on, as far as that goes. But I, I recall coming in before we went to a definitive.
I came in, I know I did. I didn't come in with Cammett. I came in, so why am I getting Cammett bills? Cammett never came in.
Well, you're asking us a question that we don't have the file in front of us, okay? Okay, but either way, we gotta have, that this issue has to be resolved.
Correct, so I offered to Bob, I said, we'll put it in escrow, okay? I'll sit down with them, okay, and go through all the bills. I want to know. And then they said, oh, Fred was there. Well, I have a question. If, it, it must have been Fred, okay, and, and, but he was retiring. Why, why would you give work to a, a person that's retiring that you know that a project's not gonna be?
Well, separate issue, it came up last minute. It wasn't something.
Came up quick.
Very quick. Fred was, something came up and he had to step down. So that was not planned. Fred's a very young man.
I know Fred. I've, I've met him. He dealt with him on my Ipswich project.
Yeah, so.
So my point is, if Cammett, then, I remember in November, Cammett signing something, a contract, okay? Here, we're, we're signing up to be the engineer on the project. And that was in November. Go, go pull the contract out. You should have the, the contract from, because they had to sign it.
Yeah, I don't have, what do you?
Well, in the minutes of 7:29 minutes, you presented the board a three-home subdivision plan.
When was it officially filed?
It would have been that night.
What, in July?
July 29th. You came in on 5:20.
My plans are showing a lot different. We filed officially, okay, officially filed in October.
There's even something in here about talking to Fred Ford.
There is, the Fred Ford, yep.
And then you, you started with Cammett, kind of. And then you may have started with him even earlier.
If you were talking with Fred Ford on that date, that means the clock was going with the consultant, right?
Mm-hmm. I talked with Fred Ford, okay, and there's a four, $5,000 bill? Come on.
Right, did you get plans from Fred?
No.
Or anything that?
Nothing.
Other, what about reviews?
Nothing, no reviews from Fred. Because they, that was what they were saying, oh, we're hiring someone, we're hiring someone. And that's when Alan came on in November. And when I talked with Fred.
Yeah.
He said, yeah, I'm gonna be retiring. So that's what I, I stopped. There's nothing to talk about.
Well, Fred is one person, one engineer in a firm, so, so it gets shifted over. So we'll, we'll find out when, when this was, but meanwhile, the issue remains. So, um, what do you want to do for a deadline on this?
Well, what he has to decide is, A, we need to get the bond finished. And Alan said he had the final price on it.
Yeah, it's 515.
Right, but they're not going to do any more work until they're paid. So you have a choice of paying the remainder and then personally either, not suing, but working it out with him out of way from us. But for us to get going on the development and give you permission, we need the bond set in place. We need the reports, and then we can start officially out there. But everything's gonna come to a screeching halt until that bill's paid. So you can recoup it after if you can prove that he didn't do the work that he's charging you for. But everything, supposedly he's got proof and you're saying you're disputing it.
200 and something hours of, of what on a, my engineering bill? I mean, we just got a, I got a $6,000 bill for the month of April, for what? We didn't do anything.
Scott, I've, I've talked to you before. This is meeting number 16 with you.
With me, not with Cammett.
And I, and I can tell you right now, most developers don't come in here 16 times.
I know. This is a, this is a first for me. This is a first.
And, and I, I have been trying to tell you the better way to do this, and you don't want to hear it. You just want to keep coming in. And every time you come in, you, you're changing something. And that's where this thing's coming from, you know, the easy way.
So, so if I say I'll have that bill taken care of, can I get a vote tonight?
Well, we have to get the bond set in place. We gotta get the final figures submitted from our consultant, the bond.
He already said the figures were 515. He said he had all the, the paperwork and all done. Where is he tonight? He said he was gonna be here.
I think that answers it, right there. Otherwise, you get a bill from coming in too.
So, so, so what you were saying was earlier tonight, that he said he'd be here between quarter of eight and 8:15, okay?
They had a meeting in New Hampshire at a, on a different town.
So why would he say he's gonna be here then?
I didn't feel that call. I don't know.
We can't tell you that. We don't know.
Right, I don't know. Maybe out of access. I don't know, God forbid, but we don't know. But we can't do anything until we have that in place, the bond. And we can't move forward.
My, my guys are ready for the, they, we just got the figure. They're already, they already got the, the insurance company doing the bond.
All right, and we need to write the decision. It needs to be recorded, has to go through the appeal period.
Memorandum decision.
I thought he already wrote, wrote the decision, Cammett.
We changed it a month ago, remember?
I changed the decision?
Yeah, we changed the retaining wall and all that review and if I go with it, remember that?
Yeah. So changing a, a retaining wall changes a decision?
Yes.
Yes, it has to be taken out and re-edited, the memorandum of decision, because that has to be recorded. So everything has to be precise of what we voted on. And you can't just delete things without that. It has to be recorded.
You gotta get a final plan again, okay, with what you're doing. What you're actually gonna do is gonna be on that final plan. And then after that, you're gonna do.
Alan says he has everything. He doesn't need anything more. So I came here for nothing tonight.
No, he came to be informed that everything's gonna come to a stop unless the bill's paid, and then you have to go after him.
But when I talked with you, I said I'll put it in escrow. That's fair.
And I had to approach.
No one called me and said, no, that's it, they got an issue with it.
I just found out this afternoon.
So.
We personally have to talk to you. We can't do that over the phone as a board. I'm only one member, but when I had the conference call with him, he's not, he doesn't want to do a thing in escrow or anything. He wants to be paid.
Now, Scott, we brought this up a, a month plus ago, I, I believe, because we, we saw the outstanding invoices. There was.
Yeah, it was 15,000 then. It's gone up another 6,000 since.
Because you submitted a change, a major.
What change did I submit? The wall? Come on, Wally.
The wall, yeah.
I took a wall out. So how much, so it costs $6,000 to take a wall out?
I, I think, I'm not sure that number's accurate, what you're spitting out. But you did change the wall, or you didn't do it.
That's the only saving grace here, that it saves money that it can go towards the engineering.
You changed the plan. A wall, a retaining wall of that size was a major change.
No, no, let, oh, I want to, I just want to make a fact. Remember that night that you, uh, Alan sent that over to my engineer, you said, geez, you gotta give him notice to review. And I have records of it, okay, because I, I went to my engineer, I was furious, okay?
And when did he submit it?
Alan submitted it over to my engineer on Friday, and the meeting was Tuesday, and my engineer got it to him Monday. So why was Alan sending to him on Friday?
I don't know.
I don't know. That's great. I don't know, but it's my fault.
Look, we're trying to get this out of here, so, but we did talk about the balances a, a month and a half ago. And I understand your concern about that. So we've got some answers, okay? So if you want, in the next meeting, we'll pull everybody in here. And we'll waste a whole bunch of more time where we can get this resolved between now and the next meeting so that we have a decision to approve next week, which is what I'd really like to do. Okay, I'd rather have a written decision in front of me with everything done so we can vote on it and get that appeal period going.
All right.
So, anything else, guys? Thanks.
All right, so I'm on for what?
16th, the, uh.
Next meeting is the 16th. We gotta make sure that the other parties are notified and everything. And then we'll have to contact you to let you know that they're available the 16th or would be the.
Who's available? Who's the other parties?
Camet Engineering.
Well, if he gets this resolved tomorrow before the 16th.
Oh, yeah, I'll get this resolved, okay? I'll deal with, I'm gonna deal with Camet, okay?
Get that squared away. We'll get the green light, and then Alan or Woody will write the decision. And we'll, we'll have the decision to vote on in writing on the 16th, so we can start your appeal period.
All right.
Okay, everybody agree with that?
So the next meeting is the 16th.
The bond has to be in place.
Well, I can't do anything with a bond till the paperwork. Alan has the paperwork on it. There's nothing, and it's all through the appeal period anyway.
Point of worry, the, the decision has to be voted on, approved, the bond come right in, side by side, and they both get recorded with, you know, one.
Yeah, everything gets recorded at once, right.
Yeah, so, so that's easy. It's a separate, separate unit.
Right, you can't get the bond for something that's not, it's not, it's not a subdivision yet. So why, what are they giving a bond for?
Yeah.
Um, until it's voted on.
The reason they got a bond in effect is because the more you disturb the land, and if you fly the coop, that land has to be restored. And we need money in place to do it.
But it, but it has to be voted on, then the, the bond kicks in.
Right.
And we're all set, because he already gave me the figure. They're already getting the, the bond on that, okay?
Yeah, so, so that'll work out just fine. So get, get this issue resolved post haste. And then we'll have a decision to vote on, and we'll have it before that. We'll vote on it on 16th, get it recorded the next day.
Everything will be all set, correct?
Yeah, because that's the last thing we're waiting for. There's no more changes, something else. Yeah, and they can, the decision's on boilerplate now that he's got all the data, and it'll go out. So, so have Woody's office contact one of us and, or you can contact Bob that this thing's been resolved, so we can get this moving.
All right. So are you happy with the letter from Tony that you're better or not?
I'm gonna, we're, we're gonna meet out there with Tony and just go over this. He, he didn't understand that.
Hopefully that goes through because that's a key thing, isn't it?
Yeah, this is an easement. He, he didn't understand what it was.
He has the easement too, language. He wanted his builder friend to look at it. I said, no problem. I gave it to him a week ago.
He did.
Okay, and Bob asked me, can you get a letter from him and stuff? So I said, and Alan.
Did exactly what you were supposed to do.
So I got a letter too, but that doesn't get recorded, okay? Till later.
Right, right.
It's irrelevant on the thing.
So, yeah, he, let me, let me speak with him with you out there. I don't think there's gonna be an issue at all.
Okay.
He just, this vehicle was different than what he described, so he just didn't understand it.
Okay.
But there's nothing wrong with that, so, and he's more concerned about the fence and the wall, actually, so.
All right, so it's real important though that you see Woody tomorrow, whatever, to get them back working on it, to have everything ready for the 16th.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to them tomorrow on it.
Thank you.